...States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Good evening, all. Heather has made a fearless prediction that we will be out of here at what time?
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen.
Wow.
Or earlier.
I just... My motion to stay until at least seven thirty so my kids are sleeping when I get home.
Is her husband here not on TV tonight? We have... First on the agenda is approval of minutes. Do we have the right number of people here? No, we don't. We can't approve March eleventh because two of us are here that weren't there. So the eleventh will have to get carried over to another night.
Okay.
Next one. Was that the... It was supposed to be another one, right?
Yes, right after that.
Eighteen?
Last week's.
Why can't I find the eighteen? I didn't bring my... I forgot my computer tonight, so...
Do you want this one? I can share it, Jackie.
No, if you guys got the eighteenth, who was here?
Yeah, we're all here. And I've read them, and I make a motion to approve the minutes from March eighteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in... Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So that's the eighteenth. The eleventh will get carried over.
Mm-hmm.
Any appointments?
I don't have any official...
Just a skip.
Yeah.
Placekeeper.
Yes.
Then we have the warrants. Liz don't sign, so we can't. So we don't have three people to sign.
Sorry.
So I'll read it in P fourteen thirty-nine dash one for one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. I won't take a motion since we don't have a majority to sign. Liz will abstain from that. Jackie, you might as well sign it.
I can sign it, yeah.
Then we have Highway Superintendent. P fourteen thirty-nine dash two for eighteen thousand, fifty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. Want to make a motion?
Can I just look at it first?
Sure you can.
This one, I can't sign it.
Yeah.
I'll get a little better by the end of the night getting it down to you.
That's all. I just know... Oh, wait. This doesn't matter anymore. Do not let Liz sign that one until last.
That was the one that went over already.
Yeah.
I make a motion to sign payroll warrant fourteen dash thirty-nine dash two in the amount of eighteen thousand, fifty-five dollars and fifty-three cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Really starting to confuse me. I have a payroll deduction warrant, P D fourteen dash thirty-nine in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, thirty-one dollars and two cents.
Motion to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I have a payroll deduction... No. I have another payroll warrant, P fourteen dash thirty-nine in the amount of seventy-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Motion to sign.
Can I look at it first?
Yeah, I wish you would.
Heather, when you put the agenda out to us in the packet, can you...
Put a copy of the warrant cover sheet?
Yeah, you know how it lists them all out with the dollar amount? Because it's just easier to read off up here than we know exactly which ones in case we miss one in a folder?
Yep.
Okay.
Agenda.
All right, so let me see which one. This one you can...
All right, that's a treasury warrant. All right, I thought this other one was a payroll warrant.
Yeah, that's that.
First one was a treasury warrant.
I just want my... Look at that.
You can do it earlier because it usually... Hopefully not.
Probably.
Heather, can I sign it off? You're getting there, Mike.
I'm getting there.
That's why she wants to look at it first. Can I just understand this? Hmm, that's not eight hours. I don't... I'm not negating what anybody works. I'm just wondering why people put eight instead of seven and a half. That's all I'm wondering. I don't... I'm sure that... I trust everyone's working what they work, but why wouldn't you just put seven and a half? I don't think it's the only place it happens. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, why is it?
Would be eight, not eight thirty-four.
Yeah, so it's going to be seven... It's going to be not an hour. It's not going to be eight hours.
Right, that's why I'm wondering why. I think it happens a lot, but I'm just wondering why.
Eight point five, so these...
Eighty-four.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's an easy fix.
Eight thirty-four.
Oh, instead of putting seven point five?
Yeah.
Right, because they did it in other pages. They got closer to the... I don't know, salary employee, isn't it?
Yeah, that's why it doesn't really matter. I'm just wondering why.
But I don't know. That's a good question. I'm not sure. I will find out.
Right, because it should... Just from the hours, it looks wrong.
So, maybe put seven point five.
Yeah, some do and some...
Others they don't.
Right.
I don't know why they do that. So this goes with that, too.
Yeah.
Let it sign. Did Mike sign it? Yeah.
Sorry, I'm holding stuff up.
No, that's what you're here for.
I'm trying to make it to seven thirty.
Oh, thank you.
Everybody's so serious in here.
I'm missing Regina.
See, there's a six point five.
I was giving you one.
Right, because it is six point five.
Oh, okay.
The other one said till four.
I can handle it.
It said eight thirty to four. But then they put eight hours anyways.
I'm confused. Well, I had yours already. Oh, yours must have been in the package. All right, so I'm going to... This is a wasted work.
I know that, that's not the issue. I just...
Right, yeah. Those are the originals.
Yeah, so that's why I don't want that with me. That's wrapper. Should be destroyed.
With all the taxes and everything, oh. I remember those dates. I go back to that blue one. Now they did it the right way.
Right.
So why would they not do it?
I don't know.
Get there quick. Joe, we'll get to you as quick as we can.
Motion to sign payroll fourteen dash thirty-nine in the amount of seventy-two thousand, six hundred, eighty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The one on the bottom, I think he did.
Spooky spot on the table.
Where did it go? Where'd it go?
We have some PCS. I have a Kevin LeBree for the Highway Department, emergency employee, date of hire two thirteen, fourteen, hourly. Here's the hourly rate, is twenty-five dollars. So this would be an emergency appointment, so that's twelve weeks.
Yeah, just for snow plowing. And then the... And since hopefully we're not getting any more snow, we should be covered.
Oh, yeah.
But the PQB had talked about in the end of the summer, beginning of fall...
To do this.
To do this so that it would last, so we didn't have to fill it out every twelve weeks. So make it last longer and note that on there. So I make a motion to sign the PCF for Kevin LeBree.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I have a PCF for a new employee, Heather. Date of hire was three-three, replacing Diana Schindler. Salary fifty-six. I have a motion to sign, full-time employee.
Motion to sign the personal change form for Heather Budrevitz.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Budrevitz, Budrevitz? I can't say with the accent.
Knew that was going to happen.
Heather, say your last name.
Budrevich.
Oh, my God, we'll never get that one.
You asked.
No, say it one more time.
You have to say it with the accent.
Budrevich.
I can't.
That's just today's pronunciation. It'll change tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. Work on that.
Regina, is we were supposed to make a note on it or do...
Just that it's a permanent employee.
We're supposed to write on this a permanent employee.
But the position's permanent.
So we're taking off temporary, that they circled temporary.
He said you can make the date as is. You just have to make a note that it's a permanent position. The position itself is permanent.
Is permanent, right.
All right, we have one for Regina Sullivan. Shay Sullivan. It's Shay Sullivan. She's been an employee for seven and a half years. This is taking her back to her administrative assistant position from interim town manager, or town administrator.
And so I just have a question for Heather.
And they got another... Heather, they got twelve written down here for the number of weeks.
I think that the reason for the twelve weeks is that when the PQB met, we wanted to make sure that Heather had time to figure out what she needed in the office, how many hours a week she was going to need, and in order to fill out this PCF, we put twelve weeks. I don't think that... I think the temporary part at the top is the part you're talking about making permanent, which is true.
Yeah, but it can't be a twelve-week appointment. She's a permanent, full-time employee. You can't make this appointment for twelve weeks.
So the question becomes, what happens if Heather decides that she doesn't need somebody in that office that many hours? Do you just fill out a new PCF?
Well, first part is that Reggie was guaranteed the position...
That's not...
Going back to the position.
Yeah.
So if there was a...
Nobody's saying eliminating the... Nobody's talking about eliminating the position.
I think when I talked to Joe the other day, he said to put job description to be reviewed on that date.
But not that the disappointment is for twelve weeks.
No, the job description to be...
I think it's unfair to put her in with a PCF for a twelve-week appointment when that's a permanent position. It's not a temporary emergency position.
No. I agree with that, but I also think that at some point the job description needs to be reviewed.
Right.
And the ability to change the hours if they need to be changed is there.
I would feel comfortable eliminating the twelve weeks and putting down pending a job description. I mean, because that position, that administrative position that Reggie is filling, goes back to before we had a town administrator.
Right, yep. I agree.
And so it needs a job description, which is obviously different from the one she was hired into, but she's been in the position for seven and a half years. I actually think it's longer.
So you're saying add on there?
I would take the twelve weeks. This is not a twelve-week appointment.
Right.
I want to be clear about that. This is not a twelve-week appointment. So I think the twelve weeks comes off, and I back to administrative assistant, town administrator to supply job description. Seem reasonable?
Yes.
Sure. But you're just taking off the twelve weeks, right? You're leaving the thirty hours per week as... Okay. Motion to approve the PCF for Regina Shay Sullivan.
With the amendments?
With the amendments made.
All in favor? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kind of redundant tonight asking for a second one. Got it, right. No personnel, PRS, no licenses, ECAT contract.
So, an update on ECAT. I had spoken with Kathy last week. There were a couple of concerns she had once we got the contract back from the attorneys who had initially reviewed it. So we worked together with it. I talked to Mike. We came up with a couple compromises on stuff, and the contract is now back in the hands of the attorneys for one final revision look. Once he takes a look at it, we'll get it back. Kathy and I'll take a look at it. Hopefully she'll be happy with things. Just a couple wording, pieces of wording were really strong. They are entering into it, giving us a lot and stuff, different pieces of it, so we wanted to make sure that, you know, they felt like they were comfortable entering into the agreement. Once it's back, we should have it signed, and then you guys should have it in your fingertips. Hopefully it all works out on Tuesday.
I just have a question about when it said you could renew the contract for five years. Is that... There is a part in there that said it would be renewed. When you renew, it was for five years, and I thought that seems like an awfully long time.
Well, I'll take another look at it. I didn't see that piece, but I wasn't looking specifically at it.
It was towards the end of it.
Because she wants it right now just for a one-year contract.
It was for one... It said one year, and then after that renewal of five years, and I thought, I don't know if that... That seems like an awfully long time to renew something for.
Okay, well, we'll put it in so it's just renegotiable after one year and all other renewables.
Okay.
That's where we are with that.
Before we go on, I have your contract in here. Is there a reason?
Yeah, I think it was just attached with my PCF.
Okay, so there you will destroy it.
They wanted you to have another copy of it for the third time.
Yeah.
I didn't do it.
Those should all get attached.
Thank you.
Good throw. We now have a water easement release for ninety-six Gilbert Road. Joe?
That piece of property goes through Gilbert Road back a couple hundred feet where it meets the property of the Denesha's estate. And it's an easement that we no longer use. The pipeline is discontinued, and it used to supply the town back in thirty-two, nineteen thirty-two. We discontinued it about, I want to say, about ten, twelve years ago. And the people now would like to be able to have a clear title to their piece of property.
Joe, is this diagram part of it? And maybe you can show us on here? There's a couple. Maybe this one's bigger? This one's... It's on there.
Yeah. This is a... That's the pipeline right there. This property here, across it right here, this here belongs to the Thomas Alhambra right here. This pipeline comes across here, and it continues on all the way into Westfield. And this is the parcel. This is the parcel that they want to have discontinued right here.
So we're not using... There's a pipe in the ground, but we're not...
There's a pipe that's in the ground. I want to make it perfectly clear, like the letter that we sent, that, you know, we're not going to be responsible.
Is there... There's no water in the pipe?
No, there's no water in the pipe. It's discontinued from both ends. But it's a six-inch diameter pipe. They dig into it, and they want us to dispose of it or something like that. It's their head. Once we release this, they own it.
They own the pipe and the ground?
Yeah.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Joe?
Nope.
So we have a release of easement. Oh, it requires a notary. Are you a notary?
All right.
I have to notarize my... Joe, did we release this at one point already? There's a release of easement in here already.
Is it for that specific property, or is that for one of the other three properties?
Oh, maybe. That's a different book and page number, so...
That could be...
Find the neighbors.
Same with that. Who signatures that?
It's the four of us.
Oh, that could have been for the parcel of property that was part of Mike Wojcicki.
Wojcicki, yeah.
And because that one there was released prior, then you released another piece to the O'Connor.
So that's all...
Stayed on Brickyard Road.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
And that's just an extension of this same pipeline.
Okay. So we've been releasing this piecemeal over the years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ever since it's been discontinued. We have no... I see no immediate use for it, even our well into the future.
Oh, this is a revised... Amanda Zadonis asked for a revised.
Yeah, that one that she's asking for is doing that.
We're talking about... Thank you, Joe. Any other questions?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
I have a... Make a motion to sign the water easement release for ninety-six Gilbert Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys get to sign. Yep, thanks, Joe.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
You, too, Joe. Mm-hmm. Oh, God.
Well, I'll take up one thing out of kind of out of order. The appointment of Heather to the FRTA. They have their meetings. I'm the designee, but they have their meetings at a time when I can't get there. Heather went to the last one for me, but she needs to be appointed to designee so that she can have voting rights. So I'd appreciate a motion.
I make a motion to appoint Heather Budrevitz as a liaison to the Franklin Regional Transit Authority.
Is it liaison, Heather, or is it...
They say liaison.
Okay.
In the letter they gave us.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm signing the letter, doing, giving her that appointment.
And if not, you know, the next week is not so May. I can always write my letter. Got time.
And go have fun with those meetings.
Oh, thank you so much, Mike. I love driving to Greenfield.
Greenfield, in the afternoon. In the winter, you can come for the sunsets. When you're done with that, that you're next up on the standard review?
I... Yes, and the only thing to add on that is the PPPB is actually taking up the idea of the standard review on their next meeting agenda. Art may have one or two words to add on that, and that might be something the board is interested, that you may want to defer to the PPPB for...
P?
I know.
B.
The P's Board for recommendations and some suggestions from them.
So we hear from Art, then?
Yeah, we put a package together, procedure, policy form for both management and non-management, and we'd like to board advise everybody on the board, get the approval from the board, and then bring it back.
Your board, PQB board?
Yes, sir.
And then come to us after.
Come to you and...
And that's for management and...
And non-management.
Man-management.
I think it's a great idea to charge them with putting that all together.
Yeah, sounds like a wonderful idea to me, so...
And remembering retired engineer and HR personnel, I think we get a pretty decent job there.
Any further discussion?
Do we have to vote on that, or they just can do it?
I think they can just do it, but to make it clear, we could do a motion just to ask that the PQB complete their, what's it called, standard performance review method. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
I make a motion to have the PQB finish and finish their performance appraisal package. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm reading ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Heather's report, if we can have it.
Open time for the public first. We skipped them now.
I'm trying to keep you on time. Open time for the public. George?
I understand that the conversation before, Personal Policy Board was rewriting Regina's job description?
No.
No.
What we had...
Temporary position?
I'm sorry?
Temporary position? Did I... I misunderstand this thing?
No, it's going back.
It's going back. She's going back...
She's going back to a job...
That she had before.
Board at that time personally certainly was... would be there.
Right.
Yes.
I was one of the people who guaranteed it to her.
I recall that, and I remember who asked the question, right?
And I will be the one who say we guarantee her the position. There was a question whether or not it was continued on a twelve-week appointment. It's not. It's a permanent appointment. It's not a twelve-week appointment.
Well, let me ask you another question. What does the Personal Policy Board do with it?
Because she was going from administrator position back down to assistant, she had... It has to be approved by the Personal Policy. It went through all the channels as if it was going up also. It got signed by Finance, it got signed by Personal Policy, needs to get signed by the department head, and it comes back. Because she's our employee, it comes back to the department or the select board to sign it. So...
Thank you, Mike.
Anybody else, town, public?
John is actually here tonight from Finance Committee, just briefly to talk about our joint meeting on the fifteenth, and his question is if we can actually hold our meeting a little bit earlier because his past experience with us might be that our meetings jointly with Finance and Board of Selectment over the budget have run rather lengthy.
What time are we scheduled?
Yeah, I guess April fifteenth is the date that you folks always say. If we can do that, that's fine. My only concern was we've got to post it, you know, two weeks prior to the annual town meeting. I guess that's the eighteenth and nineteenth, so we have plenty of time because there are changes in between.
The town meeting is the twentieth. I went on check.
So as long as we back up, and after we leave, we're going to need a week or so because we're going to be making changes. So I think that's fine. But we're asking if we can do it like at six o'clock because if last time I think around almost three hours or so.
What date did we set that for? You can do whatever time you want that night because I'm not here. Whatever time you want.
We can go earlier.
I want to do it earlier.
I have nothing.
Oh, wait, the fifteenth, I am here. I'm back, damn. Back to thirteen.
You already said it, so...
I'm back on the thirteenth.
It's fine, whatever time you say is... I have nothing.
Six o'clock, I can probably get here for.
Six o'clock. 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock. So what point is posted joint meeting? All right, I'm back on the 13th.
We're about 95% there and we'd like to invite minimum of the large department heads because, you know, the four Normans and the large three departments.
Can we send out a, something to that we're gonna be meeting to discuss budgets and you're invited to attend?
Yes, I will work with John on the invite list.
There's not a lot of.
Well, I don't think you can exclude anybody.
I mean, it's the smaller ones don't want to come.
Yeah, that's fine.
Don't want to force them.
No, no, but I'm saying some of the volunteer ones, right.
Highway, police and Normans.
But I think it should be an invitation to everybody if you choose not to attend.
Call this a public meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying give them a special invitation. Give all the departments a.
I don't know if you're gonna mandate a meeting or not, but like you said, they're welcome. It's just we're not gonna talk much about the smaller budgets because it'd be.
Well, I guess if you don't show up, you put us, you're at your own peril for what we do to your budget.
Are you gone?
All right. So we're gonna do 6 o'clock and we'll send out an invite to everybody.
Yes, and just something you and I talked about earlier, Mike, is moving, we initially scheduled the all boards meeting.
Oh, yeah.
The first. We talked about moving it until sometime in May after the election so that we can actually have the new board members here, new commission.
When I thought about it, it seems kinda silly to have the people that are there now for a week or two come in, meet everybody and go back and reconstitute after the election. My, my thought was certainly this seat will be filled by somebody different than have the meeting afterwards and start right away with a fresh group. Whoever is new elected or not can come in and meet everybody else at the same time. Rather than getting everybody in once and then having them back again.
Fair enough.
You know, for the sake of a month.
Mm-hmm.
And we do need to have a special meet, we got another meeting anyway that's gonna take, another issue that's gonna take up time, so we need the appointment.
Do you wanna pick a date for that now or do you wanna just put it off?
Well, I.
We've preliminarily penciled it in the first, but we need to.
May 1st?
April 1st.
No, do you wanna pick a new date?
The new, all boards.
Oh, all boards.
The election's the second.
Election's on the 5th.
5th, so you should probably give it a week or a couple.
How about the 20th?
Mike doesn't really care. He won't be here.
Alright, so let's pick the 20th. That's two weeks.
All boards, the 20th.
That gives them all time to have a meeting and come in. All right.
Sounds good.
Thanks, John. Your report, Heather?
Okay, so some updates from the last meeting. Last meeting you guys had voted to default back to WEMCO. We are now defaulted back to WEMCO and all God only knows how many accounts we have. I think we have six or seven at least. The last meter reading they were taking was March 24th. After that, and after our next bill, we will be going back to WEMCO. Is that what I'm saying?
You're right, saying you're right.
Western Mass Electric, whatever.
It's like I say, Hampshire. I'm wrong too, and it's Hampshire. And I've been running into New Hampshire all my life and I still mess it up.
That's all right. You'll get used to it.
It's the brain doing weird things.
We're still working on how to say your last name, so.
You're gonna be working on that one for a long time. DOT sidewalk project. I met with Charlie from Conservation last week and very nice. He came in and sat down with me on, I believe it was Wednesday. It was. And we actually did a conference call with the gentleman from DOT and also the head engineer on the project. And we discussed, you know, what was happening. Charlie discussed his concerns about how we felt that residents of Southampton didn't have as much notice as other residents on Route 10. Had, for instance, folks in Northampton, what have you. We just didn't feel like they knew a lot about the public hearing that was held back in October. Unfortunately, because there's such stringent requirements as to the public hearings, the state can't exactly just come out and do another public hearing. That processor's already come and gone. They can send information, the engineer can answer questions, but we can't just have a hearing, invite the state and have them come. It's not something they're legally allowed to do. So we have to kind of work with what we have. The engineer's gonna send us big posters and pictures so we can put them up on the wall, out in the hallways here, so people can see the information, see more stuff about the project. When they are here on the 31st, at least the engineer will be here from the project itself. Conservation, that's on a Monday night, I believe, at 7:00 PM, I'm once in this room. They'll be able to answer questions if people have them. Charlie did address with them the concerns folks had. Sidewalk, safety, which side of the street, et cetera. And they knew of the concerns from the last meeting, so they're aware of them.
Did they seem like they were willing to move it to the other side of the street?
I don't think per se that they're going to be adjusting the plans per se, but I think they're at least willing to listen to them, understand and explain their rationale for why they're doing what they're doing. And why, you know, even if someone says, you know, I think this is more logical to do it this way, they have other reasons why. Maybe there's a watershed reason or a, you know, various things conservation-related that they can't. Some restriction that prohibits them from doing it. Even though it seems more logistically reasonable to do it, there's something prohibiting them from doing it that way. Okay, that's the information on the DOT. Capital Improvement Commission or Committee, I think it is. We have one more response. I heard from Randall over the Highway Department. His mechanic Roger Ball Jr.?
Yeah.
Had actually expressed interest in being a member of the committee. That would bring us up to three members and we'd be down only by two.
That's good news.
So that's, the question is if anyone's interested in nominating him and, and if this.
You might have nothing to do with your time, Mr. Phelan.
You could be number four.
But we should probably have that as an agenda item before.
Do you like me to put that in an agenda item next week?
That would be better as an agenda.
I will add that as an agenda item for next week.
Then we can take it.
Okay, individual department meetings. I met with the Police Department yesterday, the chief. We actually spent about two hours together, so I got quite acquainted with the Police Department. We went over all of his IT materials, everything they had. They have a, quite a complex system over there, to which I ended up leaving with a very long and lengthy sheet of paper, which I can't seem to locate at this very moment in time. But it's rather lengthy as to what they have over there for their systems. They have their own server. They back up right there onsite. They don't back up offsite. They have several systems they tap into on the state. They have several officers. They have people come in all the time. Their needs. Well, as you know, their budget is like anyone else's budget, similar to the fire department's budget. They have things they need and they ask for things they need. I think the chief is very reasonable in certain ways he does things, and I thought he had a good plan in place where he's looking forward to maintaining his equipment he has. So I had asked, I had heard that one thing that comes up often is the request for a new police car, and I said, well, what's happening that this happens? And he explained it to me. He said, you know, they have about three or four police cars and they rotate them out. They try to keep them all even so they have the same amount of wear and tear on them, same amount of mileage on them. And a police car isn't like a regular recreational vehicle. You can only put so much wear and tear on it before, you know, once you get up to 70,000 miles or so, it's done. You're done with the police car. When you cold start it, when you're running on parts like that, when you're, you know, going from zero to 70 in a matter of seconds, you're killing, you're killing the machine. It's just only gonna last so long. What he's been doing is he runs like one car for about four years, remember rotating them out regularly and throughout the week so that they all get even use. And then at that point, it's time to replace it. If you replace that same one car every four years and just keep continuously replacing them, you always are in good shape. It's a maintenance plan. It's how they keep up with things. It's the same thing we do with our computers theoretically. We have 24 computers. Theoretically, if you replace three every four years, you know, you keep on going. So that's the idea of what he tries to do with the police cars. And he figures approximately $33,000 per cruiser. Right now, they're in between which new car is the better car because apparently the ones they used to make, which was the Crown Vix, they stopped making in the police line. So now there's debate over which car is the best one. The ones I seem to like better are the ones that look like the transformer car. Chargers? I'm just waiting for the car to spring up and take action on the road.
Is he looking for two this year or just one?
Um, he didn't get one last year, so now the problem is you have to replacement two. At some point in time, there was actually discussion about putting a line item budget into a specific budget for the $33,000 item so that every year he doesn't have to say, and they need a $33,000 car, but it's just simply listed out as $33,000 to the budget.
That should be done. There's no way you're not gonna use up a car every year. We've gone through this many, many times.
So that's, that's something I learned while I was in the police station.
Are the Chargers the same amount of money as the Crown Vix?
I don't know. That's the amount he's approximately paying every year. The Crown Vix, they stopped making, so it's not really an option to buy more.
Right, but I mean, are they?
There may be a state bid where you can, they get those. They may have an alternative bid.
Not sure. I know I asked, the one question I did ask is what they do with the cars once they're done with them. And he said the trade-in value is not very high for the vehicle, so what they usually do is they use it as a part piece. So they'll go retire it down with the Highway Department and then they'll just take it for parts, for whatever they can. So when one of theirs breaks down because they have three others that are exactly the same, you just take it for parts. You have a carburetor you need, you have a.
We occasionally have used those cars for highway superintending and.
Punch ladies? Punch ladies?
You don't wanna drive, but we've used them in other locations occasionally. I can't remember. Some of them have gone to funny places.
Exactly.
So, other than that, the other thing we talked about, the police chief and myself, was the fact that we should try to work together a little bit more between the Select Board's office and his office with applications pertaining to liquor, entertainment, et cetera. He said one of the concerns he's had over time is sometimes he doesn't always get applications enough ahead of time to know something's coming up other than just getting noticed on the agenda. What I'm used to doing, and this is what we talked about, is trying to set up a low precedent on this, is I'm used to getting licenses, anything that may even remotely interest the police, and sending them right over to the Police Department for their prior approval and their interest level to peak before it comes back to us to look into further.
We, we, we were doing that. I don't know that we still are. We should certainly send them to the police and to the fire. Just to cover ourselves that everybody, even, even if it's just a routine matter, they should be both going. I mean, just for purposes of public safety. They should both have an input because even if it's not a quote "fire" issue, it might be an ambulance issue at some point in time.
Some other things. IT meetings. We started meeting with some IT groups this week. We've met with two. I will have a better report next week once we have met with all three. Won't get into too many details right now, but folks who've met with me are Art, who is one of our volunteers, also serves on a few committees. We have Adam from the Health Department. Randall has also been attending the meetings. So we are interestingly rounded group of people. Annual Town Report. We are working diligently on the Annual Town Report. I found a couple templates from other towns that I liked on how they put the information together. So ours will look a little different this year, but hopefully it'll be a neat flow of information that people will be able to follow. And then we'll improve from there for next year based on feedback. Gonna go somewhere, so we're gonna give that a try. Scheduling. I think we have everything pretty much done here. Vicki's review, I think, is on the 8th, provided we actually have a review standard by then. And that's all I have. And Mike, it's 7:14, but we haven't heard from Liz.
I was just gonna say, Liz, you're up.
About what? Oh.
You're.
Do you have any comments?
Anything from the town meetings?
Well, Liz doesn't have any comments.
No.
Well, then I got, no comments, then I gotta drag this out. Select Board Meeting, we got April 1st.
Appreciate your effort.
April 8th. I hope your husband doesn't though. April 8th. I'm out of, out of here on the 8th. I was thinking that was the one. I'll be back for the 15th. Although that, that's a, you should mark that I may or may not be here actually because I'm in Boston on Monday and Tuesday.
Which is that?
15th. I should be back, but there's a possibility that I might not be.
Oh, I do have something I could add.
Hmm?
I have something at the end I could add.
You want, you want the floor now?
No, not yet.
The Annual Town Caucus is the 27th.
That's Thursday.
At 7:00 PM. There's no signs out front. I see Hampshire Regional has garnered the sign out front.
I didn't even notice.
For their play. And I mean, I don't have a problem, but I didn't notice what the date of the play was.
This weekend.
Oh, so then we should change.
Sound and music.
Yeah. Start this weekend.
The sign out front should get changed to the Town Caucus.
I don't know how to do that.
I don't know. Actually, now that you say that, who does control that?
Would that be Paul?
I don't know. Somebody just goes out and changed the letters, right?
Yeah.
Take them down, put them up.
That's where the letters are.
You just stick them in a little slot.
I don't know, but, but we should see about changing it.
Okay, change letters. Make.
Make an announcement.
You could put that, you could put that on, you could tweet it and Facebook that the Town Caucus is Thursday.
I did.
Oh, you did?
You want a bake sale?
Oh.
Check your Facebook pages, Liz.
I was making something.
And you may, you know, Heather, you might wanna send out a press release on the, on the Town Caucus.
I emailed Rebecca about four hours ago.
With that?
On the Town Caucus and with a specimen ballot.
Oh, great, good. So that's done. Angel Park Monument, its dedication is May 4th?
May 4th, Sunday at 12:00 PM. And on April 19th, we're having a bake sale at Tractor Supply at 12 o'clock. So if anybody would be.
For the Angel Monument?
Yes, for parents to help pay for papers and the dedication day, which is gonna be beautiful and I hope that people can come.
No foot of snow?
April, I mean, May.
In May?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna help the two young kids that are trying to get footballs and basketballs for the whole school to use, and they're having a can drive at school. And these two little fourth graders, three fourth graders, the cutest little things, said, how come there's no basketballs at recess? I said, I don't know. You should have a fundraiser. Tell your moms. And they did, and they printed flyers and they have some boxes. So if anybody has any cans that they would like to donate, they're running this until the end of April, middle of April. And the I Center is going to match any donations that they get. So if anybody has any cans and you wanna give them to me, I'm happy to bring them in. We can drop them off at school.
How much is it worth for me to drag the meeting out for 15 more minutes?
You can stop. It's okay.
Where are we with the illustrious sync?
Okay, so Board of Health met tonight. The sync is no longer a syncing issue. It is a sanitizer that's done. The only thing they're working on now is the grease trap. So the Board of Health is gonna talk to Richard when he gets back on Monday, the building inspector, to see if they put in the grease trap, if they can be finally done once and for all, and if no more issues will arise. And if that's the answer, then the Board of Health will issue a final decision and we will install the grease trap for hopefully somewhere between a couple hundred and $500, give or take. And at that point, we'll be all done. If they say, well, then we need X, Y, and Z, then it goes right back to the Board of Health and they will come up with something else. But they are very proactive and they wanna work very closely with the COA to make sure we can get this resolved quickly and hopefully once and for all.
Now, where are we with the roof leak at the school?
I just got lots of questions tonight. So I emailed everyone last week. I got a phone call. Well, actually, I backed it. Let's back that up. Randall stopped into my office on Thursday morning because he had got a phone call from the janitors over at Norris School that there was a puddle of water on the floor and the janitor actually had to vacuum it up. We then called over to the superintendent's office. The superintendent was out. I had received a return phone call back from Bobby Jones. Bobby then updated me that the previous week on the 14th, they actually had a leak as well. And at that point, the janitor, I'm sorry, the principal, help me.
Anastina?
Anastina, thank you, had contacted the contractor for the roof, Greenwood. Greenwood had not got back to them. On Friday, I received a phone call from someone else in the superintendent's office who had then reported to me that they heard back from Greenwood. Greenwood said it was not their default on the roof, but rather it was a structural defect that was previously existing prior to their work on the roof. The janitor was in disagreeance with the statement from Greenwood and would like to look into it separately and have a separate assessment done by an outside contractor. I asked the superintendent's office if they had the funds to actually cover it and also to look into what it would cost, because if it costs a certain amount, we'd have to go into looking at the purchasing laws that would require us to get certain bids, et cetera, et cetera. So at that point, they said they'd keep us apprised of the situation. I don't believe either anything has changed, or if so, they haven't updated me, but since they've been so good, I don't think it has. It's now Tuesday. Haven't heard any updates.
Do we owe Greenwood or any people on that job any money?
I believe yes.
And I would like to suggest that we make a motion that no further payments be made to any contractor on that school roof project until the issue is resolved.
So moved.
And please notify the town accountant and powers that be that no checks are to be issued until they're approved by us. Even if there's something in the pipeline, I don't think it should go out. That was a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've done this too many times in the past. Pay for the job and then to find out it's leaking. I know there was problems around the hood up there, but.
I don't know if it's the same area.
I don't either, which makes me concerned.
Nope. Nominations for the Citizen of the Year being accepted by the American Legion, so if anybody would like to make any nominations for that, please send a letter with reason and sign your name and send that in. And if anybody has any beautiful antique cars that they would like to show in the parade, we'd be happy to have them. And anybody who'd like to march past Select Board members included, we'd be happy to have you.
We can set you up in a really nice car.
Hey, put me in the car and roll me down. That's the Memorial Day Parade, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So we did, I think anybody have any other issues? I don't see anything that really. No other issues, I take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.